I thank you for your patience while I had a brief attorney-client meeting going on. I'd like to ask everyone to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance and remember those serving across the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I want to wish everyone a happy new year. Do we have enough seats? Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for attending the Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting of January 2nd, 2019. To my left, we have Robert Anzalone, Chris Gerver, Richard Catagio, our Secretary, Gail Nogal. All the way to my far right here, we have John Collins, traffic engineer, Natalie, our engineer, Rick Golden, our attorney, and we have Stu Turner, our planner, and I'm Maria Hunter, your chairperson. Board members, have you had a chance to read the minutes from December 5th? If so, do I have a motion to accept?
I make that motion.
For a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just real quick, Rick, I guess we can discuss this associates regarding Camp Buckler. Do you want to do a brief or do it at the end? Okay, I'll do that at the end. Okay, I have one added item. It is Yonkers, exit 131. Anyone here from Yonkers who would like to go up to the podium, please step up to the podium, state your name for the record, and just give me a moment. Is it, first, is it Tim?
Yes.
Okay. You can hold the microphone out of the, is it on, Jeff? The microphone? There's a button underneath the bottom there with a, underneath the, to take this on the other side, there's an on/off button. Yeah. Yeah, I just said it was an added item, yes. If I wasn't clear, this is an added item to the agenda, so.
Tim Caulfield, Yonkers contract, that's better.
Just give us a brief overview while you're here.
On the front of that job site that's going on out there, front of Route 32 and on Route 17, that's better. And this is the site plan of the DOT's property and the Shops at Woodbury property. This is Route 32, right here, and the DOT has property that's just outside of the red.
Okay.
Is that better here?
I don't know if I have the feedback.
The DOT's property is surrounding this red property. The Shops at Woodbury is the red property plus this little area right here. So right now, there's a temporary park-and-ride that holds about 100 parking spaces in this area right here. There'll be a permanent park-and-ride up here that will hold 203 parking spaces, and the rest of the site is being used for a temporary ramp and excess fill material from the site. So we're looking to propose to not only just put a little more excess material, clean-earth material from the project onto the Shops at Woodbury property, which is adjacent to the DOT's property.
Okay, thank you. Rick, I want to have you jump in.
So this is essentially a fill and grading project. As such, under the code, it's not subject to a site plan review. It would be a review of the grading plan. I checked with Gary on this to ensure that he was in agreement with this, and he agreed. So it is not a site plan, it doesn't need the site plan elements presented to the board or deal with any waivers with respect to those, but it is a fill and grading plan, and it does have to be approved by the board in accordance with 310-6H of the code. I did not see that any Seeker EAF was submitted for this project, and the board has to perform Seeker before it can take any action on any application before it, such as this. So therefore, the board can't do anything tonight other than they could take, actually, they shouldn't even take the initial steps without EAF, there's no sense in doing so. There doesn't need to be a coordinated review, so at the next meeting, if there's an environmental assessment form submitted, the board can assume lead agency type the action, which I believe will be unlisted, and make a determination of significance with respect to it, and if they believe that there's no significant adverse environmental impacts, they could go ahead and approve the grading plan if they're in agreement with it, or require modifications to it if they think that that's necessary. I think that's it.
Okay.
But before the board could act on this, you would need to submit an EAF. In my opinion, it'd be a lot easier for this board if you only included in your application that area that is on your property, because the board will not be approving anything that's off of this property, such as on the DOT land, which is noted on your current plan that you've submitted.
Right, we were just doing that to show the correlation with the properties and how that the grading would work.
Well, there's no problem with you shadowing that in, but in accordance with your legend, what you're saying is those dark contour lines are the lines that the board should be reviewing, and they're not going to review anything that's off of this project site, is my point.
Yep.
All right, so you'll get a short-form EAF submitted tomorrow, next day to the Building Department, and I'm going to go down to the board here, and if you do that, then we can more than likely put this on for the next meeting, which would be in two weeks. Rich, any thoughts, concerns, questions on this? Chris?
Not right now.
Robert?
After it's filled in, are you going to cede this until further work is going to be done on the project?
Yeah, we'll have all the normal erosion control measures in place during the process, and if we leave the area, we'll have it seeded, stabilized.
Yes, even though it's not a site plan, it's still subject to various other provisions of the code dealing with stormwater management and soil erosion control methods and methods that you're going to be using, and Natalie will be weighing in on those things with respect to the plan.
Yeah, we follow all the normal DOT guidelines with respect to erosion control, which ties into the DEC and all the other.
Right, but there's also town provisions as well that you'll have to comply with.
Yep.
Natalie? Did you want to just touch base?
Sure, absolutely.
Did you get a copy of the report from Mr. Ron?
Of, yes.
You have, okay.
Okay, we did previously submit a memorandum to the board, assuming a site plan review would be required, but we agree with council and the building inspector's determination that the review of a grading plan would be applicable for this action. Most of the comments in our memorandum are no longer applicable, but we do note that the fill materials should be tested for quality and deposited and stabilized in a manner that is suitable for future development, that creates no nuisance conditions prior to the eventual development of the site. We have also reviewed the application from Yonkers in conjunction with the Shops' application, and have compared the proposed grading, and it appears that most areas the applicant is proposing to raise the grade to just below the final grade for the Shops, which is appropriate. And we agree with Rick's comment that the areas for the board's purview should be defined better. And again, as was stated by the board, erosion and sediment control measures and appropriate management of stormwater would be required as well. If you have any questions on our memorandum, we could discuss them at the next meeting.
All right. No one else on the board has any thoughts, concerns, questions? The only thing that I'm going to ask Tim, which I was in correspondence with Scott Geiger, next time you're going to show us where 204 parking spots are, because you're short 30.
203.
203, so you're short 29 spots from me right now, right?
Well, this was taken, I guess, an older plan at the earlier phases of the project.
All right, so it's 203, okay, perfect. And then, Rick, just real quick, who is going to provide us with the agreement with Coach for maintaining Losi? Is it going to be the DOT or is it going to be the Shops? Because that's something that we have to determine later on.
This application is solely with respect to the fill and grading of that fill.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with anything else dealing with the project or ingress or egress or anything else. That'll all be handled with respect to the Shops application.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, without being said, you know what you need to do?
I do.
Thank you, and we'll see you in probably two weeks.
Great, thank you.
Have a good night. Next item on the agenda is Shops at Woodbury, review and discuss revised site plan and traffic studies submitted for a mixed-use development to include retail stores, restaurants, and a hotel. That property is located at the intersection of Route 32 and Losi Lane and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 225 block 1 lots 34.1 and 34.2. Please, oh, Dominic's coming up. Please state your name for the record.
Yes. Good evening and happy new year to everyone. I'm Dominic Cordisco from the law firm of Drake Low on behalf of the Shops at Woodbury. We were last before you on September 5th, and since that time, we've been working on the plan to address the board's questions and concerns, and we have our full team with us here tonight. We have Steve Esposito, our planner, but we also have John Canning and Kevin Van Heis from Kimley Horn, the project engineers. And at this time, I think it would be helpful to go through a comparison of the approved project for Cabela's and realizing that this is not Cabela's, but looking at all the Seeker-related impacts and how this compares to that, so that the board could have an overview of that effort. And I think at this point, I'll turn it over to John Canning and Kevin Van Heis to walk you through that.
And before John speaks, I just want to note for the record that we received on November 7th the Kimley Horn report. On November 7th, we also received a Seeker analysis. On September 29th, we received a full EAF. October 2nd, the Orange County Department of Planning response. On October 26th, we received a letter from the attorneys, Mr. Sweeney, and on December 28th, we received the H2M memo. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Chairman. For the record, my name is John Canning, I work for Kimley Horn, and I'm the traffic engineer who's been preparing the traffic analysis for this. Obviously, as you're well aware, this site was the subject of a detailed Seeker analysis of a broad range of subjects, including traffic, and mitigation measures were identified for it as a former 100,000-plus retail facility. The mitigation measures required essentially were a double-left turn in from Avril Avenue, a double-left turn out to Avril Avenue, and then some minor signal timing changes and adjustments along Route 32. When we began this process to see if the mitigation measures that were originally approved for the former project would suffice for this application, the first thing we did was to compare how much traffic would be generated by the project, and most of this material has already been submitted to you, and as your engineering consultant has indicated, traffic is kind of complex, so I'm trying to explain it as simply as I can. Basically, the former project was going to generate 408 trips in the PMP rush hour, and the current project generates 348, which is 60 less, and that's at the site driveway. And on Saturday, it was 596, and now it's 509, so that's 87 less. We also looked at how this would affect traffic volumes up and down Route 32 and Avril Avenue, and as you can see, from Evergreen Road to the northern driveway to Woodbury Commons, it's mostly less, except at Evergreen Road where it's one more and three more. But basically, this iteration of the project at that site will generate less traffic pretty much every intersection. At some point, there was a question as to how much traffic the new park-and-ride facility or expanded park-and-ride facility would generate. This was a figure from one of the reports that we sent to you. Basically, it's kind of doubling in size, so it's going to add an extra 30 trips in the peak hour in the PM and approximately 10 on Saturday, and this is just where they turn left and right. We took these trips and added them to the project traffic at the various intersections, so this is essentially the same table. The numbers are more or less the same, except we went from 1 to 2 here and from 3 to 4 here, or 2 to 4 here. So basically, even with the additional traffic from the park-and-ride, which is not part of this project, there'll still be less traffic up and down Route 32. To provide some context, when Cabela's was approved with a design year of 2026, it was projected that, rated level of service C in the PMP hour with an average delay of 29.5 seconds. This is at the site driveway, so we did, redid an analysis at the site driveway for the subject project. We projected out to 10 years after completion of the project, which is now 2030, and we've determined with the new improvements that are going on out there, the average delay will be 23.7, and because the project is smaller, which is six, almost six seconds better than Cabela's was projected to be, and on Saturday, it's 6.5 seconds better than Cabela's was projected to be at the site driveway. We, as part of this process, when we initially got involved, we worked carefully with Tim and the Department of Transportation to make sure that the improvements that they were making to the intersection of Avril Avenue at Losi Lane would not preclude the construction of mitigation measures that were originally determined for this project, one of those Cabela's, the double-left turn lane in and the double-left turn lane out. They graciously consented to move curbs by about a foot, the poles were in the right location, the pedestrian poles had to move by a couple of feet. The bottom line is that all of the improvements that the DOT are putting out there will allow future mitigation of this project if it's approved to be accommodated without the need to put workers out into the highway again to dig up lanes and put in trenches. We did a comparison of the capacity of the intersection with and without the improvements that the DOT is making specifically at this intersection, and we determined that the, basically what they're doing is they're taking the southbound approach, which I'm not sure how it is today with everything that's going on out there, but previously, it was two through lanes and a right-turn lane, and in the future, it'll be three through lanes, and you can make a right turn from the rightmost. So that increases the capacity on that approach by 575 vehicles in the peak hour in the evening peak hour, 15% increase, by 403 or a 9% increase in the Saturday peak hour. So basically, the improvements that the DOT are making to that intersection will add capacity to it. There was also a question, I believe, on this the last planning board meeting, my apologies, about the impacts potentially of additional traffic from an expansion of Woodbury Common that's recently been brought forward. So we looked at how much traffic we expected that to generate through this intersection and made a determination that it would be approximately, in the Saturday peak hour, approximately 80 trips in either direction, and I'm going to say it was probably 58 in either direction in the PMP hour. So we added those to the analysis that we'd previously provided to you, so this 23.7 goes to 23.8, and the 24.1 goes to 24.7, when you add in the future traffic from Woodbury Common at this intersection. Those vehicles would primarily be going on the three southbound through lanes and the three northbound through lanes, so 80 lanes divided by three is 20 cars an hour, 25 cars an hour is not really that much. It's also, I guess, important to note that when this board reviewed and approved the former application for this site, the interchange or the reconfiguration of the interchange, while it was planned, was still somewhat uncertain, and the Department of Transportation is now committed to doing this, it'll be done, and obviously, traffic operating conditions, not only at this intersection, but in particular, the one immediately to the north where you have the two phases, and the double-left turn getting on to the throughway will be greatly improved. So that's something that's different than when you reviewed this before, and a benefit to the area in general. The last issue I'd like just to touch on briefly is parking. The previous application had, I think it was 109 more parking spaces than this application. This application has 506 parking spaces provided. The code requires 500, what did I get? The code requires, so the green light, is it still?
Green light is on, you might.
Search the scanner.
Rich, is it working now? Rich, can you give him your microphone, please? I don't know what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Now it works.
It's just me.
It's okay.
The code requires 571 parking spaces, but that's limited for each of the uses, and you've got fast food restaurants, you've got casual dining, you've got fine dining, you've got retail, and there's also a contemplated hotel. So those uses peak at different times. Obviously, a hotel peaks overnight, fine dining is on a weekday evening, retail is typically on a Saturday afternoon, fast food is typically on a weekday afternoon. So we went and we looked at how much parking would be generated at each of the peak times. So for retail, we determined the peak time was 2:00 PM on a Saturday, and when you have the peak parking demand for retail, you'll have probably half for fine dining and significantly less for casual dining and hotel. Overall, we determined a peak parking demand of 473, which is considerably less than the 571 required. We did the same for fine dining, we got 425, casual, we got 470, fast food, we got 469, and then overnight for the hotel, we had 276. It's kind of obvious that the retail's not open, the restaurants are not open, you're really just talking about the hotel. And the peak time we determined was 6:00 PM on a Saturday when we'd have a peak parking demand of 474 vehicles. What's sort of interesting to me, and probably only because I'm a traffic wonk, is that you get kind of an even distribution of parking, which shows you that you're maximizing the use of that facility, rather than if it was an office building, there's nobody parking there from 5:00 in the evening until 8:00 in the morning, and then it's parked all day. So we're getting fairly even parking numbers throughout the day and on the weekend. The peak parking demand of 474 is 32 less than the 506 provided, and 97 less than the 571 required, which is why we, if we proceed forward with this, will be before the zoning board for variance. And from a traffic and parking perspective, I think that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. I'll have the, anyone else from your project who wants to give a, anyone else from your project want to speak?
Yes.
Yes. Do you want to walk them through the revisions to the plan?
Yeah, we'll do two things.
Okay.
Good evening, Steve Esposito. And John really outlined the traffic, which was in Dennis's report to you. There were two items that he thought needed, you know, further review with the board. Traffic is one of them, and sewer and water is another one. But there was a whole host of environmental thresholds that were evaluated during the Cabela's analysis, and what we did is we compared the original Cabela's findings to the scope of the current Shops project. And under land use, that was one of the, one of the thresholds that we looked at, the Cabela's required side yard variances, both combined and single, lot coverage development and building height coverage, or building height variance as well. We are not looking for any side yards or front yard setback reductions. We are looking for a variance for development coverage, and we are also looking for a variance for building height for the hotel, but as you know, currently, the Village Board is under the process of reevaluating that provision of their codes and the comprehensive plan, and it's, from what we've read so far, is that the height will not be an issue anymore, and that will, like, that request will likely be taken off the table with the ZBA. There's also, under the current code, we've looked for an interpretation on lot area. There's some question whether the hotel would be included or combined with the business center, and we've asked for an interpretation for that. Again, with the new code, that may be moot, and that may also be taken off the table. So in terms of land uses, very similar to the originally approved plan. One of the next ones that we looked at is lot area disturbance. The Cabela's site would have, the Cabela's project would have developed or disturbed 12.3 acres or 91% of the site. The current plan proposes 8.2 acres of disturbance or 85% of the site. There's a 6% reduction in overall development, or development disturbance. Parking, John mentioned, the Cabela's site would have had 615 spaces, we're proposing 506, and again, we will be either asking this board for a waiver for the overall parking requirement based on the parking analysis, or make that, include that in the application to the zoning board of appeals. Building coverage, the original building coverage was 90, just under 100,000 square feet, we're proposing 52,000 square feet, which is a reduction of about an acre of building, or 45% reduction. The impervious for the Cabela's site was 8.61 acres, about 85% of the overall site. We're proposing 7.8, which is a 0.8% reduction in, 0.8 acres, reduction in impervious or 10.7% decrease. Pervious has also been increased. Pervious for the Cabela's project was 1.4 acres.
1.3 acres.
Switch out, just.
Switch out.
Just keep switching.
Nope, go. Thank you.
So the pervious is, there's a reduction of impervious by 55% of the site, or impervious 55% between the two alternatives, which will allow for, you know, landscaping and green space within the current plan. There was disturbance for some isolated wetlands on the site. There are, in the previous application, there were onsite federal wetlands, those land, that has been taken by the state, they now own the federal wetlands, the woods, and what we call isolated wetlands, those were disturbed as part of the Cabela's development, but those are no longer onsite, so there'll be no disturbance of wetlands for the Shops application. John went through the traffic, through all the different, you know, peak hours, there's been a reduction of traffic across the board, anywhere from 30% down to 8%, depending on the intersection and time of day. There is, there is an increase in both sewer and water demand. Water is an issue really with the Village of Harriman, for those of you who live on that side of the highway, that water would be provided by the Village of Harriman, and we've met with them in the past. Once we nail this scope, the work down, the job down, we'll go back and meet with them. With regards to sewer, we've inquired with the Village, and there is allocation available for sewer, so we will be heading to the Village Board to secure that and allow them to send, ultimately send us a bill for sewer. So these are the sort of thresholds that we've compared to the Cabela's site. And just to touch, touch a little bit on the revisions to the plan. Buildings 1 and 2 have been reconfigured, as well as the parking lot between the two structures. If you recall, Building 1 had a drive-through, a drive-through on the southern side of the building, we've now moved that to the northern side of the building, did a couple of things. One, it didn't create that conflict between pedestrians and vehicles on the drive-through, and also allowed us to increase the queuing for that drive-through. We've also created sort of a parking court between the two buildings, and now those parking spaces are accessible to both buildings. We think it's a much better orientation. And we did the same thing, you know, moving west on the site, we've created a sort of a parking court for these uses, this which is going to be another fast food, retail, and then restaurant. We've also, one of the concerns was pedestrian access from. We've also, one of the concerns was pedestrian access from the hotel down to Route 32. We've then established a pedestrian path down to Route 32 that will tie into the And that sidewalk will tie into the sidewalks that are being installed as part of the 131 development. So with the main walk from the hotel down to 32, and then we've also connected, there's also interior connections to the various buildings within the site itself for pedestrian This is a little tough to see at this scale, but I know there were some questions about how is this site going to work with... How is this site going to work with the park and ride, permanent park and ride? And so what this plan does is it shows you our proposed signage and striping, so how parking and traffic will be regulated on our site. There's also, we're showing that the proposed signage also that is part of the DOT's permanent park and ride as well. So if you look at this plan, this sort of tells you, or at least gives you an idea of how things will work and how things are going to be signed and striped. All right, so this is just some more signage. Again, what we're talking about, again, just some detailed information on signage, freestanding
That's it?
I think that's it.
Okay. Anyone else with your team?
Not this time.
Not this time? Okay. All right, with that being said, I'm going to jump over to our consultants. Who wants to take it first? John? Since you've got the heavy-duty one here. Let's see if your microphone works.
My microphone on.
There's a little button underneath the bottom.
Can you hear me? I'll talk, please, so I won't run out of...
Thank you.
The green light. From a traffic standpoint, basically, this application piggybacks on the previous approval for Cabela's, which was done before the 131 interchange was in play, et cetera. A couple of things we want to note is, we don't disagree with the... by necessity, with respect to the matter in which the analysis was done. However, I think it's beneficial to the board if we had a diagram of the state highway as to what it's going to look like when all that work is done, basically, from the on-ramp to the interchange continuing to the south. So we get a picture as to what that whole area would look like, because we're dealing with not only one side of the street, we're dealing with the other side of the street. And we should look at what the improvements would be colored, what would be the difference in the improvements that John was referring to with respect to the double left turn in and the double left turn out, as an additive onto the system that the state was building. Secondly, the issue, and then we can check the levels of service, et cetera. Secondly, the issue of the waiver of the parking to reduce it from by about roughly 100 vehicles. It puts it right on the verge, and I think I would want to know an analysis of what happens if I discounted the hotel parking? Because looking at that site, the parking for the hotel is at one end, I'll call it the west side of the property. If that were not built, the hotel were not built, or you're taking credit for that being open during the daytime when the hotel is not in use, it's a long walk from the various retails, et cetera. So I want to see a stage analysis, what happens if I discounted the hotel? What happens to the parking on the site? Is there sufficient or not sufficient? Okay? Using the same methodology. And then, secondly, is there a potential for land banking or cross-sharing of the park and ride facility when the park and ride is not fully utilized, especially on weekends? Is that beneficial? Or, and the question is, how are you going to enforce it? People parking in there as a park and ride facility when the park and ride facility is not open, or until it's open? So I think there's a number of issues that I look at. I think the level of service back and forth, the plus or minus two or three cars, or 20 cars, or 30 cars. I think there's so much traffic in this corridor, we're not looking at numbers per se, whether it's 30 or 40, it just doesn't make a difference. But we're looking at, how is the system going to flow? How is it going to operate, especially with what's going on in the corridor? And especially what may happen across the street?
Thank you.
That's my quick summary.
Thank you. I don't need microphones. Nadley?
Thanks, Maria. At this time, the applicant is seeking ZBA relief on a number of items, including lot area frontage, coverage, among others, that they have described to you. It is the applicant's responsibility to seek all necessary relief from the ZBA for the plan they present to you for approval. The most recent plan before you provides only the information the applicant believes is needed to address the threshold code issues on use in bulk area to advance seeker for the required ZBA action. Under seeker, you previously declared intent to be lead agency and required notices be distributed. Additionally, Attorney Golden requested the applicant submit a comparison of the recognized seeker impacts from Cabela's versus Shops, and the applicant has since submitted this, which they have reviewed with you tonight. We note that the applicant should consider the changed conditions in the area and how they impact the environmental conditions and required mitigations. We have listed some of these in our memo. Based on the comparison of the prior development and proposed, we believe many of the proposed mitigations of the Cabela's site and findings of the board would be applicable and could mitigate the environmental impacts of this development, except we believe as... We believe traffic and water and sewer need particular attention, as Steve and John have indicated. With respect to traffic, we primarily defer to John's comments, but note that this is a complex issue, and that impacts of the new commuter lot on access and management of parking, along with general visions to the exit 131 and roadway configurations should be considered. With respect to water and sewer, as Steve stated, the usage of water and discharge of wastewater increased considerably. Water supply will be by the Village of Harriman, where the wastewater discharge will be to the Village of Woodbury Collection System. The ability of these utilities to serve this property will be important to the consideration of environmental impact of the development. Since the sewer will be going to the Village of Woodbury System, we believe that the sewer administrator should have his input. And as in similar applications, the applicant may be required to offset contribution through reduction in inflow and infiltration. We have provided other comments on the site plan and consideration of the application in our memo for the board and the applicant to consider. And if you have any questions on those, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Thank you. You're next in line. Stu will get to you.
First, you're going to have to change the seeker typing of the action. There are new seeker regulations that went into effect as of January 1st for those projects that have not yet had a determination of significance. This project has not yet had a determination of significance. You previously listed this as an unlisted action. However, one of the revisions made to type 1 actions are for parking for 500 or more vehicles, and therefore, this would now be a type 1 action. So that you'll need to go ahead and make a motion to retype the action as a type 1 action, and we will have to advise the other involved agencies of that change. That's all I have at this time.
Okay. Stu? I know we haven't done much landscaping, because we're still working on the plan.
Okay, I can be very short. We still have the threshold... We don't have a... We have the threshold issue of seeker, which Rick has gone over. The board is going to have to make a determination before the zoning board can deal with the requested variances. And now it appears that there may be some change in the requested variances. So we know there's a need for an interpretation on the use, but the issues relating, as Steve indicates, maybe the issues relating to height and possibly the use issue may or may not go away. I don't know what the timing is on that, but that's going to have to, you know, you'll have to make a determination on how... The board will have to make a determination, and the applicant will have to make a determination on how you want to proceed in terms of how many variances you'll be requesting. And the only other thing is, as the chair indicated, she will ask us to provide comments and written report on certain aspects of the site plan, particularly the landscaping and the issue of the pervious versus impervious surface, and the connection between the commuter parking, which we raised much earlier in the process. So there's the connection between the commuter parking and the site. So that will come later, and I think you've heard, the board has heard, that there's still some complicated issues that have to be resolved before we... I think before you can proceed.
I'm going to go to the board, because I'm just going to... I know Steve, we spoke... Is this... I don't know if he can hear me or not. I know we... I mentioned earlier about the DOT with the commuter parking and access easements, that you're working on that, so that eventually we'll have that for the board. As I stated earlier, through correspondence with Scott Geiger, and what Tim confirmed here, it's 203 parking spots. Eventually, someone's going to show that on a map somewhere for us when you decide where the other 29 spots are going to go, because we need to know where those are going.
You know, this was... These documents were submitted well over a month ago.
I know. Changes are...
Right, you'll see.
As we go forward, just as a reminder, and following up with H2M's memo, I just had something in here somewhere. Maybe that was it. I can't find it right now, but Robert, do you have anything that you want to... Lots of concerns?
I just wanted to ask our traffic consultant. The park and ride, I imagine there's going to be peak periods where cars are going to be coming in and out. Is that going to play a significant role in the intersection as far as those numbers
It's amazing when you've got to put your glasses on to find the correct button to push, but there are two issues from a traffic standpoint, is the queuing on the driveway, the impact, et cetera, and the surging of the peak hour traffic due to, let's say, the park and ride, in other words, if that's letting out, it's a surge. I don't expect that to be the major issue here. I think the major issue is the fact is that this site only has basically one act, has to get in and out of the site. Secondly, the fact is we're putting a lot of laneage out there, and there's a number of users that are going to be there. The laneage along the state highway is going to be significant, and even today, while it's a construction, I almost saw a person coming tonight making the turn onto the off-ramp over by Woodbury. So it's going to require signage. I think the board has to see what it's going to look like, and with some kind of color or traffic flow diagram, from basically the exit from Route 6, the westbound exit from that signal, towards the interchange, because we have a number of driveways that are on both sides, and there's going to be a park and ride, et cetera. I think the board has to see that visually, and what are the additional improvements. And then the next question is the parking, and how that parking is going to operate if various components are not there. In other words, for example, the way the site plan is laid out, it's probably not going to be built all at once. I mean, there's going to be pieces going to be built, et cetera. Or does the applicant plan to build the entire project, put all the parking in, and then come back in and add the buildings in as they're leased up, et cetera? And then we have to look at, on the park, John mentioned fine dining. Well, what happens if fine dining couldn't occur, and we have to resort to a different type of operation? What impact does that have on the parking? So there's going to be a plus and minus on the parking, but I think we're in the ballpark. I think it's a minor refinement. So I don't know whether that addresses, answers your question. It's a work in progress.
Can we get a, like, an hour by hour of cars that go into the park and ride and out? I mean, find out what the peak times are? I imagine that, you know, 7, 8, 9 is probably in the morning a busy time.
I think the applicant can do some kind of an estimate for that, but I don't see the morning hour the critical. I see the evening hour as the more critical, because in the morning, the shops are not open, et cetera, and the traffic is coming in, let them park and go. But what happens in the evening, and what's the scheduled, anticipated schedule of bus traffic into there?
I notice always around 4 o'clock, they start unloading the buses around there.
They come in, and basically, from 4 to 8 is basically when you're going to get the traffic from the park and ride.
Before we jump to anyone else, how many parking spots were there with the prior park and ride?
I believe there were like 97 to 100.
Okay. And what is there now with the temporary?
There's about 100.
About... Is it the same number?
It's the same number, yeah. And that park and ride was right on the driveway, so it wasn't really the best location.
Right.
So now it's internal as part of the circulation, and 100 of them were there already, so it's really only another 100. But we'd be happy to go out and do a count and give you an hour-by-hour breakdown of, you know, how many there are. They're probably going to be spread out over a number of hours, so, you know, we've estimated it's going to be an addition of 30 in the busiest hour.
Because being that it was on 32, I know there was the hassle getting out right there opposite the station, the gas station. But it's going to go from about 100 to about 203 parking spots, so that's going to be the double amount. So that's something that we have to keep in mind.
Right.
All right? Anything else?
Sure, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, thoughts, concerns?
With traffic, I'm curious how the trip analysis, you guys were able to come up with the number of trips for that facility. Cabela's was a known tenant, a known destination. Here, there's a lot... I understand the overall site plan is different.
Yep.
Well, this is a much different mixed-use facility, and depending on what establishments go in there, will drive how busy traffic is and what times of the day.
Yep. So basically, what we did is we broke the individual components of the site into their various uses. So a hotel is one use, there's regular retail, and then there's a bunch of various types of restaurants. The ones with the drive-throughs, we assumed would be fast food. And then there were two other restaurant facilities.
Hold that door for a second.
Thank you. There were two other restaurant facilities, we assumed. One would be casual dining, and one would be fine dining. Things can change a little bit, but it's kind of, it's a broad spectrum, so we're kind of covering all of the bases. Then we went to a document or a compilation of data from studies all over the country of various types of uses called the Trip Generation Manual. It's produced by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and it has various sections. So it says hotels, and it says, okay, for a hotel, depending on the number of rooms, you'll generate this much traffic in the PM and this much traffic on Saturday. For fine dining, depending on the square footage, you'll generate this much traffic in the weekend, and this much traffic in the PM. And we went through for each of the uses. Then we took all of them, we said, okay, well, how many of these folks at the hotel are going to have fine dining? Or how many folks at the retailer are going to go to the fast food to grab lunch? And so we took a small credit for internal capture. And then on top of that, we said, how many people going to the fast food are already passing on Avril Avenue? And they decided, I'm hungry now, I'm going to go in here and get it. So that's typically what is done for this, and we added them all together, subtracted out of those credits, and we came up with the trip generation for the entire facility. And that was included in one of the earlier reports that we provided. And if you guys need more information on them, I'd be happy to discuss the specifics and the details.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chris?
With the parking, I know we're kind of on the cusp with the parking. Another concern would be with snow. We get a heavy snowstorm from January to March, we could potentially lose, you know, you go to any large shopping center and you have 30-foot mounds of snow.
Yep.
So...
So I believe there are some snow storage areas on the site. You're probably still going to lose, I'll be honest with you, a few parking spaces. The bottom line, really, is that your peak parking demand for a retail facility is going to be when the weather is nice, or when it's before the holidays. From January 1st, January 2nd, let's say, to the middle of March, you're never going to have the same level of parking activity that you do in December or in May and June when the weather's nice and people want to get out. So I don't... So, I, I don't, yes, you lose a few parking spaces, that's not the key issue, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Rich?
Just the, two questions here. Could you bring up your other chart that you had displayed there on the floor? No, the other one. No, no.
The one behind you.
The one behind you. Yeah, and, just for clarification, because I don't have the original documents that were submitted. How, PM is, is that weekday?
Yes.
And that's defined from when to when?
Typically, it's like 5 to 6. It's in the report, it could be 4:45, 5:45.
Yeah, I don't have it. So it's like 5 to 6?
Yes.
And the weekend is also?
Typically, it's in the middle of the afternoon. We go out, we count from 11 to 3. Typically, the busiest hour is in there somewhere, and that should be identified in the report as well.
Okay, so with the one exit and one entrance?
Yep.
That number is, which is the 408?
So, it's now 348.
So, does that mean 348 vehicles are gonna go onto 32 between 5 and 6? Is that what that means?
They're either going to go on, let's say, half of them come in, and half of them go out. So, 348, that's 170.
Right, onto 32.
Yes.
Going out, or, or coming in?
Or coming in, that's correct. That's like 3 a minute.
And, in the, I'm not a traffic analyst, but you, I like the idea where our traffic consultant said at some point, I think he called it a virtual traffic display, to see the, which way the traffic goes. I'm curious, on the outbound...
Yep.
Because, you know, we have a lot of projects going off of 32, other projects.
Sure.
How do you know how much is going on the throughway? How much is going up Route 6? How much is going north on 32? Or, we don't know, we're just saying, it's, it's coming out on 32, and we don't know which way it's going.
So that's a very good question, frankly.
Yeah.
Because that's one of the hardest things to do as a traffic engineer. It's relatively easy to figure out how much traffic there is, because we've got detailed studies of shopping centers and fast food restaurants. Determining where those trips come and go from is, is more difficult, so we made our best estimate, we based it on the volume of traffic, where people are turning into and out of the Kohl's facility, that's a retail facility, that gives you the directional split. And then we looked at the volumes of traffic at the, the next interchanges up and down, and if there's a lot turning on to Route 6, we said, okay, we'll get a good portion of turning on to Route 6. But you also have to consider, you know, the population up there, are they really going up Route 6? Because there's not a big density up there. So we did that, and we provided this information to this board, and your consultant reviewed it and said, well, we generally agree with the, the approach, and we think it's reasonably accurate, but we would be interested to know if it's somewhat different. And so we did a sensitivity analysis, and this is actually the revised version based on some input from your consultant. And that's how we got it.
Okay, and then, if you could just, there's another chart, just, if you could just flip a couple. Now, keep, keep, another one.
That's the same one with the, with the drive, with the...
No, that's, no.
Right, right, parking and ride trips. This is the levels of service with Cabela's versus with the shops. This is the capacity of the, the increase in capacity of the intersection because of the...
Yeah, that, that, that's the one there. You're saying there that it's favorable. The difference, it means favorable?
Yes. In this instance, what this means is that when the DOT went in and made their improvements, or they're in the process of making it, but when they're finished, there'll be a capacity to accommodate 575 more vehicles on the southbound through movement in the PM peak hour than there is today, or was before they started. And on Saturday, there'll be 400, the capacity will accommodate 403 more vehicles.
Again, I'll leave it to our traffic consultant, but I'm having a hard time understanding that number, because you don't know which way the traffic's going. Is it going towards the throughway, Route 6, 32? So how do you determine capacity? Because today, we all know, if you go on 32, it's backed up, Route 6 is backed up on 32, the throughway's backed up, and that's only because it's under construction, what I'm saying. How did you, how do you get to that number, not knowing which way the traffic's going?
Well...
The crystal ball.
It just concerns me, because...
And rightfully so. I mean, what, what John didn't say is the fact is that, from a traffic engineer, and you have to do your best estimate, it depends upon whether or not the use within a facility is a major draw versus a local type of restaurant. For example, Cabela's could be considered to be a major draw that would draw traffic from the throughway. However, if it was a hotel instead of Cabela's, that is also gonna draw traffic through the, through way, at a lesser volume. But if I, all of a sudden, I put in a McDonald's, you're not gonna take traffic off the throughway to go to the McDonald's, because there, it's not that kind of... So you have to take into account not only the trips that are being generated by the site, you have to take into account the makeup of those trips, and are they trips that have been attracted to the site specifically for that loca, that retail facility, or destination, or not. They've done that, okay? They've done it, and some of these trips are going to the throughway, some of them are going north on 32, some of them are going back over to Monroe, and going south, and taking Lock and Drive, et cetera. So they're going different ways, depending upon what they're looking at. They may also be going from, let's say, for example, some of the restaurants here may be coming from the Hampton Inn on the other side, coming straight across 32 and into here to have a dinner, or whatever the case may be. So, we, you have, you have to look at that from a judgment standpoint. So we have to look at it from a volume standpoint, and then, what, what I think the board should see is to how the whole corridor matches, the turning movements, the conflicting movements, and what the volumes will ultimately look like. And look at that, what was there before, what's there now, and then you'll understand why, all of a sudden, you've gotten the reserve capacity, and that's what John's talking about, an additional reserve on there that hasn't been utilized yet. Now, sooner or later, it's gonna be utilized, because something else is gonna come in on the 17 or 32 corridor to use it up. But it's, this project's not gonna use it up, there's gonna be other projects that come on board, and we have to do a phased thing to see what actually happens, because many of these trips are gonna be going back and forth between the various developments that are in the area already. So it's a complicated system, and there's no clear, clear definitive answer that this plus this plus this, and you have to look at it from a time standpoint.
Okay, and my last question is, on the other chart, the one...
Before or after?
I think it's after.
Sure.
I think you just answered it, but... It was about park, yeah, right there.
Yep.
It says that number of spaces parked, fast food restaurant, right? That column right there?
Right.
We hand us.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
It says, number of spaces parked, does that mean parking space?
That means number of spaces with cars parked in them.
What about, I mean, if I go to McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts today?
Yep.
There are hundreds of cars during peak hours that drive up all the food and bleed.
Yep.
Where's that number?
So there, there is a relationship between parking and traffic, but it's not a, a hard and fast relationship. For example, if I have an office building with 100 spaces, it might generate 200 trips, because 100 people come in in the morning, and 100 people go out in the evening, so that's 100 spaces generates 200 trips. But if I have a shopping, a supermarket that has 100 parking spaces, that could generate 500 trips or 600 trips, because all throughout the day, you'll have people coming in and out. So, this is the parking, and how many people are parked for the fast food. The, the traffic is in, over here. Is it this number here? So we included the traffic through the drive-throughs and whatnot in, in these numbers here.
Okay, so the people that go drive through a fast food?
Yep.
During peak hours?
Yep.
If it's, say, it's 100 cars, it's in that number there?
Yes. Now, two, two caveats. First of all, some of the people that go to the fast food are from the hotel or from the retail, so it's in the report, it's a relatively small number, and a lot of them are already passing by, they're what's known as pass-by. So this is the new traffic that will be added to the intersection, the various intersections. At the driveway, there'll be more, because if I'm driving by there now, I'm one trip, but I'll suddenly decide I wanna go get my lunch, and I'll drive in, I'll be one trip in, but I will no longer be one trip through, and then I'll be one trip out. So there's more traffic at the driveway. We've, I, I didn't wanna go into too much complexity, but it was in our report.
Again, when you do your final analysis, I like to see the people that drive in fast food during peak hours, like, what's the estimated number? Because I find that hard to believe. If I go to Dunkin' Donuts during peak hours, there's 100 cars that go through in an hour. So, that number...
I, I think the difference is going to be, I, I think, the, the reference, John, the reference I was looking at is what is called the Trip Generation Manual, and it's a category. And it says fast food with a drive-through and without a drive-through. And it acknowledges the fact that with the drive-through, you get more traffic, but you get less parking, because people go through the drive-through, park and walking in, they sit in their car and they move out. We have to make sure that the trips generated by that Dunkin' Donut facility is notorious because of queuing, because as Steve indicated at the beginning, they re-change, they changed the orientation of one of the fast food for the queuing, because it gives greater amount of storage, so it doesn't interfere with the operation of the parking area, the driveway, et cetera. So there's a number of items we have to look at, and refinement, and a lot of it's intuitive, and you have the intuitiveness that, wait a minute, I see 100 cars going through Dunkin' Donut. But I find that once the queue gets to a certain level, people will say, wait a minute, I'm not gonna sit on the end, I'm gonna park, run in, get my coffee, and come back out. I know I do that, as opposed to sitting in there and waiting for 20 minutes, where I keep one car at a time, and, okay?
I, I would provide you the number for the drive-throughs.
Oh, appreciate it, yeah.
Okay.
We're good? Board members? All right, before I forget...
The correspondence that we received from Sweeney about the deed restrictions, what might be addressed?
Once the, once we move forward, that will be taken up with the applicant.
Okay.
And they know about it, that's why I mentioned it.
Just asking.
I'm going to offer a motion that we declared this a Type 1 action. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion amongst the board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes?
Yeah.
Any other comments from...
I, I think at this point, it would be helpful to make sure that we understand what we need to do. I think we have very clear comments so far from, from the board and from your consultants. Our site plan, as it relates to the Exit 131 redesign project, already shows, you know, the improvements that are immediately in front of, of the, of the site, of course. But I think if I understand correctly, what you're asking for is a diagram that shows basically the entire overchain, interchange, rather, and how it relates to the site with movements that could occur throughout that distribution. Is, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so we, we can provide that, and we'll, we'll submit that. And if I'm understanding also correctly, you will be resubmitting or recirculating the difference in the type of action, from unlisted to Type 1 action to the other agency, so they're apprised of that change. Is there anything else in the interim, apart from what you mentioned tonight, anything that you would like to see in resubmissions so that you could consider further, make a determination under Seeker? Because I wanted to be sure that we're trying to capture everything, so that we can present everything to you, rather than in a piecemeal fashion.
Natalie, we, we, anything on your end?
No, I think with the exception of the revisions to traffic and the contributions to the order, I think there was a...
Stu, we're good?
We, we have to wait for the number of issues to get resolved before, I think, you can finalize your final plan, so that we may have a few things to say, but I think we've been, historically, we've made our comments, and I, I don't know, John, I just wanted to clarify, did you also ask the applicant to give us a, a diagram that was more colorful or more clearer in terms of signage? I think for the board's benefit, for all of our benefit.
I think it, I think it should be a, a very clear illustration as to what's happening in the corridor, as opposed to just a whole lineage, and I think you have that feeling.
Oh, I see, okay, for the whole corridor.
Well, yeah, for the corridor, because I think the corridor is what everyone's concerned about, because you have to get in and out, off this corridor, and there's a lot of money being spent by the state in the corridor, and we just wanna make sure that it falls pretty clearly.
Does, um, the state, does the state have this map? They must know what they're doing with the final project.
I'm, I'm sure...
I would hope so, because it changes.
Yeah, 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 no, it's, yeah, yeah, it's, it's being devised. I, I do wanna touch on this, this issue for, for a moment, though, and just make an important clarification from our perspective, is, is that, you know, New York State DOT is spending the millions of dollars that they're spending on Exit 131 reconfiguration. And they did a secret review for that project, and they oversee it, and they're, designed it, and they built it, and it is what it is, because the state owns it, and the state is overseeing that. And we're happy to show you our relationship to that, but we have no control, nor say in how, like, that interchange has been designed, or how it's going to work after it's done. However, we can show you how we fit into their design, and how, and how traffic moves on, on that site.
I, I think that's all we were asking for. We wanna see what the corridor looked like before, with the, with the 131 interchange, and the improvements that you're looking to do.
Yeah.
For example, when you ask for a double left-turn lane, there's also just not going to be a double left-turn lane at the driveway, but there's gonna be some transition back that we have to see, and we wanna make sure that everything's in...
Understood. Understood. You know, and it might be also helpful to refer you back to the Cabela's plan, which, of course, was designed and was approved at a time before...
Before, before...
131...
Before 31, 31, right.
Became a reality. So, I mean, that went through the process, and it did reach findings and did start construction, you know, when circumstances weren't as good as they were going to be. So that's, that's kind of where we're at.
I, I think the board just wants to know what's there, and then what the improvement the applicant's making with respect to this project, that's all.
Understood.
The only thing I'm, the only thing I'm gonna ask is that, have you reached out to the Village Overbury Board of Trustees in regards to the access with the frontage with the road? You guys are working on that, correct?
Yes, we are.
All right, as long as you're working on that, that's, I care about that. All right. With all that being said, I, I think you've, I'll just, you've heard what everyone wants here.
No, we, no, we did, and, and so I appreciate it. I appreciate all the effort and the attention, and won't take up any more of your time.
No, that's okay, so I guess we gave you enough information to go forward and to come back to us.
And we will.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you, have a good night. Next item on the agenda is ALDI. Review and discuss proposed revised site plan for placement of grocery store within existing commercial center. Proposed modifications include revision to the front facade, addition of a new side door, as well as cart storage area adjacent to building. The proposed store will be located within a portion of Kohl's and Woodbury Center at 43 Center Drive, as known in the Village Overbury Tax Management Section 225 Block 2, Lot 1.12. Give me a moment. For the record, let it be shown that on December 27th, we received a response from the Orange County DPW. On December 5th was the application. I noticed that this property owner's signature was missing, or did we, did I find it? On the application, the property owner didn't sign the application. It's not gonna hold up your application, but if you can get that taken care of. And also, the corporation page is totally incomplete, it wasn't filled out. I don't know how that got past everyone. It doesn't have all the information, so if you can get that completed, I'd be appreciated. And then on December 27th, we received the H2M memo. With all that being said, please introduce yourself and let us know what's going on.
Okay.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Tim Shagman with APD Engineering and Architecture. Here before you tonight to present the proposed ALDI's, proposed remodel and retrofit of the existing Coles store in the Woodbury Center and the proposed ALDI store within that space. The proposed retrofit is to fit into the southwest portion of the stores that are out there. The width of proposed ALDI's is about 100 feet from here to here. The entire store is to fit within the existing building, so there's no expansion of the existing building. The prospective footprint area is going to be 25,215 square feet. They are going to utilize one of the existing four loading bays that Coles has presently by having backs access through here. In addition to the interior improvements, we'll talk about the exterior improvements. They're going to be doing sidewalk improvements along the two sides here to provide cart storage along this side and along this side and to provide ADA access into the store. We're adding four additional ADA parking spaces directly out front, a new pedestrian ramp and ADA access across here. The overlay area that you see in gray, that's an asphalt overlay to bring everything flat, relatively level, I should say, to make sure that we have easy cart access and ADA accessibility. As a part of the proposed expansion, we are eliminating a few parking spaces here along the side. That was brought up by H2M. What we're proposing to do, we've lost spaces here and also back in the trash area, back to back here, we'll lose a couple of spaces. We're going to propose to restripe the existing parking spaces on site. The existing parking spaces are 10 feet in width. By shrinking those down to nine feet in width, which is in conform with the standard, we should be able to pick up those additional spaces. So, we won't need a variance for that. In addition to the front here, we also have a new exit off the side of the building here, coming out of the store. This is the existing exit point right here. And we're proposing to put a new trash enclosure here at the back of the store. And then, like I said, stripe out this area here for no parking, provide access to it.
Is that an emergency act with all the dumpsters that you're putting in?
The exit by the dumpster is an existing exit.
Right.
And so, we're going to be using that to access to the dumpster.
Okay.
The new exit here that's about midway down the store, that's for emergency access.
Emergency, okay.
Yep. If I turn my site plan around, this is the proposed elevation for the store. We're having, we're looking at two signs, two 10-foot by 12-foot signs. One on the front here, one on the side of the store here. The total square footage for the two signs is roughly 241.4 square feet. The allowable is 10% of the building's wall area, which is 291 square feet. So, we're underneath that threshold. There was a comment about the building height, the overall building height. It was actually noted in the comment that on a, I don't get the wording right here. The building height for a pitched gabled hip or gambled roof is measured as the average height of that roof. This, the roof of the building itself is going to remain what the existing roof is. What they're doing is they're doing a front facade here. You can kind of see it here in the front. The width of that facade is going to be probably six to eight feet. It'll depend on what the structural engineer determines is necessary to maintain that. But it's more a front facade to kind of give that look that ALDI's looking for. And so, the average height of this, even though it does, it reaches 35.5 feet at the very high point, but the average height is 31 feet 9 and 1/2 inches. So, underneath the 35-foot threshold on height. There were a couple of other comments that we received from H2M. I was going to take a quick response to some of those. I talked about the parking. There was a question about the utilities. We can definitely prepare or put together a quick study to show what the effect of the utility is going to be. Generally speaking, ALDI doesn't do any onsite food preparation, so there's not a large water or sewer demand that goes along with the stores themselves. The restrooms are basically no different than almost like a single-family home, the way you have up there. I think that was everything I had. I don't know if there's any questions?
Okay, usually then I jump over to my consultants. Hi, John, traffic across the street from the prior application, mixed additional use. Can you talk to me?
Yes.
Location of this 25,000-square-foot store in relationship to the overall center, just to get a visual. Secondly, the parking that you're talking about being modified from 10 feet to nine feet, how many stalls does that affect? Just a few, or there's a major restriping of the entire parking area?
It'll be a total of nine spaces that we're looking to pick up.
Okay.
So, if you pick up one space for every nine that you restripes, so we're looking at...
One concern I would have is the overlap between Coles' parking and your parking. And the fact is that whether or not there's reasonable amount of parking within that zone to satisfy the demand for both majors, I'll call them two major stores. And then, secondly, the trip, the volume of traffic generated by a 25,000-square-foot food store is significantly different than that generated by a retail facility. And there should be some analysis of what the impact is on the state highway system and the driveways, especially in light of what we heard with the previous application. We want to make sure that we cover all the bases. So, there should be some analysis of that. You can piggyback on the information they have and then do a generation, but it's not a one-for-one square foot change.
That's it. Natalie?
Okay, the applicant did a great job describing the proposed improvements. We just would like to note that this is in conjunction and piggybacking off of a recent application for the right sizing of Coles located in the Woodbury Center, in which they've vacated a portion of its former footprint. And now, this application for ALDI's is proposed for that area previously occupied by Coles. The proposed improvements are for architectural and operational improvements that affect the current parking grading and landscaping arrangements. We note the property is in the IB zone and is part of a commercial center. Building Inspector Thomas Berger has advised that the use is considered retail and is permitted as part of the center. No changes are proposed that would impact the bulk and area regulations under the code, except building height, which the applicant has described. They've advised that they are complying and they should just show the same on the plan. With regard to the site plan, we recommend an existing conditions plan be submitted to facilitate a review of the changes, especially with regard to parking and the landscaped areas. We also believe a turning movement plan may be appropriate, showing the truck deliveries to the loading dock area. And any restrictions to traffic should also be noted. We have also noted that some discrepancies exist among the plan and the elevations submitted. And from afar, it looks like maybe some of them have already been addressed. Furthermore, with regard to parking, the applicant has indicated that there will be a reduction of eight spaces and approximately four handicap spaces added to the area in the front of ALDI's. But we do believe a parking analysis should be submitted that is comprehensive for the commercial center. Plans that we have on file from 1999 show that the required and provided parking left little room for any reduction in spaces. So, we'd have to see that all together. We had comments on the utilities, which the applicant said that they would provide response to. And then, the last thing would be in respect to ARB. And in accordance with your typical practice, the applicant should provide an ARB application and material cut sheets for your review. We note the colors proposed are distinctly different from the other tenants in the building, and we recommend you consider whether this is appropriate. And that's all we have at this time.
Thank you.
The only thing I have at this time is that you should indicate that this is a type 2 seeker action. This is pursuant to the new regulations that provide new type 2 action for reuse of a residential or commercial structure that is otherwise permitted under zoning. Therefore, it is now a type 2 action.
Thank you. Stu?
Just briefly, because I think Natalie would, well, Dennis, I know will suggest that maybe the ESO should take a quick look at this or a look at it because of the cart storage in the front, just to be sure that there are no issues with regard to circulation for emergency vehicles. And I think there, earlier was some landscape strip in front of the building that I think...
Yeah, there is.
Goes away now or proposed to go away. We prefer not to go away, but I don't...
Right now, it's proposed to go away to provide for the cart storage and...
Yeah, well, the board may want to have some, they want to, maybe want to suggest that the landscaping, if we can accommodate it, we should. Because try to maximize the amount of landscaping in the shopping centers. That's basically it. I think, just, and maybe you want to clarify, because I don't know if there's, if it's perfectly clear, the, or maybe I didn't understand. Your proposed reduction in the width of parking spaces was only for those along the side of the building? Is that correct or is that not correct?
The areas we're looking at would be here along the side of the building.
Right.
And here, and then also...
Oh, out in front as well?
This lot in front, but just the one that closes to the street. So, it really wouldn't get over into...
Okay, so I think it's appropriate then to, yeah, to, I think as Natalie suggested, to do an overall parking analysis, just to be sure that we're okay.
To show we're right come, okay.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. My question to you... And actually, this is to Natalie. You do make a mention about the turning movement plan, the truck deliveries. The truck deliveries, is it the same current location that Coles is located now?
That is correct.
So, where is the turning radius, where's it changing?
Sure, the only reason that we said that is you can see in the, I guess it's the west face of the building, they're actually widening the area for pedestrian movement and the sidewalk area there, which kind of restricts the move, or the in-between space between the parking spaces. So, if trucks were to enter at that location, it may be a little tight, which is all we want to see, is that confirmation that there wouldn't be any...
Wouldn't the trucks go on the outside ring road to the back like it normally?
Again, that's...
I'm just asking, because we should maybe make, that could be a signage thing.
Right.
No trucks, trucks only further up.
Agreed.
If that's how they're doing it now...
If that's the case, I'm not sure what existing signage is there. But again, we mentioned that in our memo. If like, if the movements are restricted, then there should be some signage indicating the same.
Yeah, the analysis we've done so far, I think, is what you're saying is the trucks come around the back here, back up into the dock, and then they come back out this exit here. So, they never go along the front of the stores.
They don't go within the parking stalls, they go on the outer road. So, maybe we might consider putting a sign that says truck deliveries or some, you know, no trucks. We'll have to figure that one out.
We can look into that.
That was my one concern. The dumpsters there. ARB, I know you haven't submitted anything. This is an old one that was submitted with the prior application. Years ago, when this development, this project was put in there, it was supposed to have a certain look. And with all this glass on the corner, I don't know about the look. The way that it's called Woodbury Cent, it's not center, it's C-E-N-T-R-E, which is old-fashioned.
Right.
And I don't know how I feel about all the glass in the front, because it's, you have all the glass and what Coles did alongside of it with the right sizing, and you're taking away from the greenery, the landscaping out front. I'm just hard-pressed how this ARB is going to look out front. So, you've got to wow me a little bit more with some kind of landscaping or softening that. And if ALDI's doesn't need to have that extra few feet above the rest of the store, you know, height is, see what they can do. But that's my one thing, so I'll pass that on to, because I see you looking at that. So, Robert?
I agree. I feel it doesn't fit in with the characteristics of the other stores. I mean, every store has a little bit of individuality, but this is quite different from what's there. Also, I had a question about the cart storage. Is that something where you have to leave a deposit? Because I have one years ago, you had to leave a quarter for a carriage and then you got your quarter back and you returned the carriage. You still have that?
They do. Obviously, the tip of that is you don't want carts wandering on the parking lot.
Right.
By simply making it a quarter, people always bring their carts back. It keeps the parking lot clean, kind of keeps all the cars from being, you know, jammed up against the...
Would there be anybody to collect the carriage in case someone says, well, it's only a quarter, I'm not going to walk all the way back there? Do you have people that do that?
You don't?
There are. I'm just connecting, I'll be here to help along the way, I'm with ALDI. Yes, our employees periodically will look out for the parking lot. If there is a stray cart, they will go ahead and grab that and bring it back. But what we found is the method of the business model, if you're not paying a quarter, you're going to get it back. So, it does work. And so, it is a deterrent from carts being left in the parking lot.
I don't know if it would work on a windy rainy day. Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Does ALDI offer any type of pickup service or delivery service?
I'll speak to that one as well, guys. We are working, we partnered with Instacart for delivery. So, they are our third-party delivery. And we are working through test stages of having a pickup. It's not something we're proposing for this location or nationwide. It's just in a few test sites in the Midwest at the moment, so nothing to talk about on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Chris? Rich?
The only question I have, Coles' hours of operation, I think, are either 10 to 10 or 9 to 10. What are the hours of operation here?
It will be 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So, the traffic would probably be similar since it's in the same footprint?
Same footprint.
Yep.
Okay. A different kind of store.
Different volume. A different volume of traffic, but 10 hours of operation.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, good.
Anyone else, consultants, board members, thoughts, concerns? All right, so before I forget, I'll make a motion to declare this a type 2 action. Do I have a second?
I seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next step. Rick? Need more information with the traffic and...
Yes, you have asked for more information from various consultants and planning board members. Excuse me, they need to provide that. Obviously, a public hearing is required. It's up to you as to whether or not you think it's ready now or you want to wait until this new information comes in so that the public would have an opportunity to review the revised materials once you consider that they're adequate.
EAF, or what are we doing? This is a prior approved project area, what are we doing with that? Do we need any other additional seeker documents?
No. Once you say it's a type 2 action, that's it, you're done with seeker.
So, we're good with that, just want to make sure. The only other thing is on this development plan, you have Village of Woodbury, Woodbury Town Hall. It's Village Hall.
Those are, I'm sorry.
What's the address for Village Hall? Anyone know off the top of their head? Just check the address, because we have a town and a village hall, so just if you can change that. And in the future, when we, if and when this is approved, in the bottom right-hand corner of all documents that have to be signed by me, make sure it's in the bottom right-hand corner of the signature plaque, and you can always get that from the building department.
Get the, okay.
And going forward, board members, any other plans? You want the smaller sizes in these?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
The consultants can get the...
We love doing those, so, yeah.
The consultants get the larger ones, we just need the smaller one.
Okay.
All right? All right, so, that's what you need to do, and you'll come back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, you're good to go. Stu is good to go. Everyone else is going to stay with me.
Have a great time, safe travels.
Next item on the agenda is Solar Liberty. Discuss proposed placement of rooftop solar panels at the Life Storage Building. That property is located in 97 Mar Lane, is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Map as section 225 block 1 lot 40. Someone here for that application? Please come to the front, give me a second, I'll pull up the file. Anyone here for that project? Solar Liberty? Okay, I'll hold it to the, I'll hold it to the end. So, then the next item, Rick, there's no one here for Solar Liberty? So, all right, so the next item on the, excuse me, hold on.
I mean, it's up to the board. You can, there are some things, such as... There are some things, such as seeker, you could... This is another one that, as a result of the new seeker regs, it's going to be a type-two action, provided that, among other things, that there isn't a SHIPO determination that it's eligible for a listing, which I think is going to be pretty clear. But I think that this is something new that's required by the seeker regulations for solar facilities, another new type-two action. And I think under this, it'd be prudent for if some... If a solar facility is going to invoke this as a type-two action, that it's incumbent upon them to get the determination by SHIPO saying that it's not eligible for a listing. I don't think that that's up to your consultants or the board to try to figure that out and try to search whether or not it is. The best way to do that is to have the applicant contact SHIPO, ask SHIPO whether or not it's a determination of whether or not it is or is eligible for a listing on the state register. And then, once you have that, then it can be confirmed. But until then, I think you can consider this a type-two action, but you can hold off on that. It was referred to for 239. A public hearing is going to be required, but without the applicant here, I think it makes the most sense to defer this to another meeting night in which the applicant is here.
Okay. Thank you. Next for me. So the next item on the agenda is Journey Church of Hudson Valley. Discuss proposed place of worship in the existing strip mall known as the Old Glory Mall. Said property is located at 95-3 Mar Lane, is known on the Village of Woodbury tax map as section 225 block 1, lot 41. For the record, we received a response on December 27 from Orange County D P W, and on December 28, we received a memo from H2M. We did receive the parking map today. I think that was... Bear with me.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Before we go forward, I just want to note it for the record that I live in the same community as the applicant for this application, but I have no knowledge of actually who they are. Sorry, I'm just a neighbor, so there's... I don't feel any need to reduce myself in this.
Not a problem. Thank you for acknowledging that. The only thing on the original application, it wasn't signed by the property owner, but there's a letter stating that the property owner gives the Journey Church permission to proceed forward with the application. And I think that was it, so thank you. State your name for the record and tell us what you have to say.
Good evening, Jim Farr from Foreign Engineering, representing Journey Church of the Hudson Valley. Excuse me. Tonight from Journey Church are pastors Maria and Peter Jones. What they're proposing to do is relatively simple. At the Old Glory Mall, there is an existing vacant storefront that was, I believe, was called the Elks Playhouse or Playroom, something to that extent on the left-hand side there. They're wishing to relocate their ministry to this location from their current location, which is in Monroe, I believe, which is in Monroe. There are no exterior renovations proposed, basically just a change of use on the inside. They'll be doing renovations on the inside for their worship area, a few classrooms, and basically it's a typical ministry. We did take a look at the parking and took a look at the parking requirement for the overall site actually is reduced by a little bit. The parking for the church, based on the 150 seats, would be 50 parking spaces, which are more than enough there. And if you have any other questions, the interior renovations obviously will be subject to a building permit from the building inspector. They have retained an architect to do that. And if there's any signage, obviously, that would require a sign permit from the building department, so...
Okay. Natalie?
We don't have much on...
We don't have much on this application, and you've already discussed some of our comments on... In the memo that we provided. We will just confirm for the board that the proposed use is a special permit use in the IB zone. Regulations of the site plan are governed by the IB district, which is for the entire commercial center and would not be altered by this change in use. As the applicant suggested, he has submitted an analysis on parking and provided information from the tenant lease on the permitted use of available parking. That analysis indicates that 121 spaces are available from existing parking, which is inconsistent with plans that we have on file from 1989 that indicate at the time 102 spaces were required and only 85 were to be provided. We did receive an additional supplement for the application today that indicates that there may be a... The supplement that we received today indicated that there may be 127 spaces available, including parking in the rear of the building and on the site edges. And we believe that at this time, it would be appropriate to confirm with the building department the previously approved parking configuration and whether this has changed since the plans we have from 1989. We do offer our comments, though, based on information that we have available, just based on the fact that the code requires and allows the planning board to waive some requirements for parking, which I'll discuss now. Aside from the fact that the original plan had a variance for 17 spaces, we're not sure if that would carry forward with this application, which would need relief for four spaces based on the required and provided parking on the 1989 plan. If the change in code alters that relief, there are provisions in the code for a reduction in parking of up to 25 percent, where a use or combination of uses on a single lot will generate parking needs that are less than the total amount the code requires. And furthermore, you could consider a general provision of the code for religious practices, which allow the planning board to determine an appropriate amount of parking where parking requirements place its substantial burden on religious exercise. So there's some things to be considered there. The only other comment at this time would be about the signage and that there are some requirements that the code... Or that the planning board would have ability to consider under ARB. That should be confirmed by you. And that's it.
Thank you.
Rick?
Remarkably, most of these have... Are impacted on the new seeker regs, which I thought relatively modest in their changes, but it seems to affect quite a number tonight. As I understand this, and we just need this confirmed, is that this is a reuse of an existing structure. There's no new structure or...
Correct.
Okay. Therefore, similar to the other one, this is now a type-two action for a reuse of an existing residential or commercial structure that is permitted under the zoning code. So you should make note that it's a type-two action. There was a question in Natalie's memo with respect to the variance and whether the old variance continues. And the old variance continues. However, you have to look at all the uses that are presently there under the present code to determine, as Natalie has done, what are the parking spaces that are required. But there still is a variant... That parking variance does carry forward.
Yeah, and I believe Natalie's analysis shows that we would have only... The original variance was for 17, and we would only need four. So we actually... The parking is reduced as a result of the church going in there versus it being a retail space or something else.
I think the only other consideration, again, is just the confirmation from the building department on what allowable parking is on that site. And obviously, based on the Google Earth image, there is some parking along the edges.
It does appear that the owner of the building restripped the lot relatively recently and...
Right.
Is different than what was... Had been.
Sure, so we'll just have to kind of confirm that, I think, for the final plan and make sure that it's complying with the code.
All right, so the applicant's going to reach out to the building department, or are you going to do that?
We'd be happy to do it.
Okay. Chris, I'll start with you. Thoughts, concerns, questions?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
Nope.
Rich?
I'm good.
Robert?
What day of worship would you be using the facility or is it a daily basis?
I'll defer to the pastor.
I'm Pastor Peter Jones with the Journey Church. And the day is for Sunday, Sunday use.
I just want to know that for parking purposes.
Yeah.
And I've seen the one in Monroe, and can you estimate how many parking spaces you'd be using based on the Monroe attendance?
Yeah, currently, we use about 50 parking spaces.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, I'm good right now. So our next step... I'm going to offer a motion that we declare this a type-two action. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Chris?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's out of the way. So Rick?
Yes.
Pending what we get from the building department about the allowable, the parking and whatnot, so we have to go to a public hearing for a special permit for this or...
That's correct.
Okay, so we need a public hearing? And...
And the Orange County Department of Planning, I think, has not yet responded, right? They have until January 6. I think that's in 30 days.
Right, so I could schedule a public hearing for the next meeting.
Yeah, you can schedule it in any event.
Right.
But I was just noting that by the time you're ready to make a decision, you will either have that report or you'll be able to act nonetheless.
Okay. My question, the sign. It's just a sign. It's not going to be lit from the in... It's not... No internal lighting inside of it, so it's just... Okay. And basic, this is the design of the sign?
Yes.
And it fits the code? Okay, Natalie, you... Signage?
Additional details need to be provided.
All right, so we would need the details of the width and length, and that could be submitted.
Okay.
And there's no additional lighting out? Because I see there's two lights out there already that are within the... So there's no additional lighting? All right, and... I'm sorry, I'm going back and forth here. All right, board members, with all that being said, are you comfortable in setting a public hearing for January 16?
I'll make the motion for the public.
Public hearing?
Public hearing.
Do we have to do notifications?
Just give me one second. We'll take care of that.
Okay.
So you're making a motion to have a public hearing on January 16 with attorney preparing a draft resolution of approval?
Yes.
I didn't mean to put words in your mouth, but I didn't make you finish. I'm sorry.
It's fine.
With resolution? And that's pending having the information from the building department.
The parking.
And the parking. And anyone have any thoughts, concerns about resolution? I mean, that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, to answer your question, our building department secretary, she takes care of all the notifications that need to go out to the area, you know, to whomever.
Okay.
And pending on what we get back from the building inspector, we'll have the public hearing, whether it be open or closed, and then we'll have the attorney draft a resolution of approval so we have it.
Very good.
All right? Anything else from us?
Nope.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. So that was January...
I missed that.
That's one... Well, time out. Hold on.
It's just whether... It was unclear whether or not there was a second to that motion?
I made that second.
You made it second.
I made that. Was Chris made the motion? I seconded, and everyone said yes.
That's fine.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night, everyone. Well, that application. Do you see what? All right. Why? Small applications.
You think I could build a wall like that?
You killed two trees.
It wasn't like two.
I know.
Then you folded one of them sometimes?
You did two different separate packets there. Next item on the agenda is Weiss/Appl Hill. Discuss review additional documents submitted for ARB application for single-family dwelling located at 26 Apple Hill Drive in Highland Mills. Said property is known on the Village of Woodbury tax map as section 204 block 2, lot 2. Okay. Give me a moment. I was going to ask you a question. I was going to throw out my old maps, but on page... Page 2 is the floor diagram?
Yeah.
It only shows me two bedrooms. The bedrooms are missing on the other side of the garage.
Three, three, nine, and a half.
Is it a four-bedroom or two-bedroom? Can you show me? Because maybe I'm missing something. Maybe I'm crazy.
No, you're correct. There were bedrooms here.
Okay. Where's the other two? So there's only two-bedroom?
Only two-bedroom.
It's only a two-bedroom house.
So is that just unfinished area, then?
There's no sign.
Where the bedroom is?
The area is gone.
All right.
We can redo. Sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Approximately, so I'm just...
Okay, all right. I thought maybe I was crazy.
No.
I'm sorry.
November 8th, on the right, was the date on the right block.
11/26. It says 11/26, page 2 it starts with. So it doesn't go with this one that's stamped in, November 8. I don't have a stamp on this one. The new one doesn't have a stamp from Maria because it was all attached. So for this one, it says...
One year, if it has.
Says what? So anything that you have that's... Anything that you have that's stamped with the November 8 on it, Chris? That's the new one.
I think the clearest way is if it had that scud one, the missing press on it, because it says Apple Hill Drive.
This is an old one.
She just said...
That's what I'm saying. I have two different maps. Because this one shows...
So it's...
It's this one.
11/26.
11/26. No problem. You got the phone. Just want to make sure.
You want to take the old ones or you want to keep them?
Look, I'll take them.
Yes, I'll take them.
All right. Natalie confused everyone. Go ahead. Actually, let me just... One, two... I had in my little notes here, need short EAF, and we just need a revised ARB application, which we'll get into later. But go for it. If you'd like to give a proposal, an overview of what we're doing now, that'd be great.
Hi, good evening, my name is Nathan Braach with Braach &amp; Associates. So, after discussion already took place, so this house, as you all know, was originally larger, and we went back to the owner, the applicant, and we cut away from the footprint, a quarter or a third, whatever you want to put it. And so we dramatically decreased the house footprint. It's like approximately a little over 6,000 square feet, actually a little under 7,000 square feet, which is, it's a nice size, high-end home. We went to great length to... We do have the rich preservation issue, which this is in the corridor, but I'd like to point out that as you go up on Apple Hill Drive, this particular site, 26 Apple Hill, slopes down towards the rear of the property, and we pushed in as much as we can, the lowest spot we could pick, which is one of the solutions offered in the ARB guidelines in the code, trying to keep as much trees as we can in front of the house. We're going to have like almost 100-foot of wooded area between the road and the house. The area that we cut away is to the left, which was, would have been visible from going up Apple Hill, but it's not there anymore. We went with a very nice color selection, which I believe you have the pictures in there, which are very neutral colors. I have the siding samples with me, if you would like to take a closer look, and the stone as well. One area, one thing I would like to point out is that in the H2M letter, they mentioned that the spaces are still there, but just the labeling has been removed, but we actually did remove, and as I previously said, the entire portion of the house, which was completely removed. The other thing is, as per the ARB guidelines, you've got to be cautious not to be excessively similar or dissimilar from houses within 300 feet. So first off, there is no home within 300 feet, because the two side properties are both vacant at this point. And we paid great attention to go to that magic line, where we are like not excessively similar to the house across the street, which is the closest, but not very dissimilar. We have, we did very similar colors, actually, almost very similar colors, but different, but not very different style home. It's a, as you're looking at it from the front, it's still a one-and-a-half-story home only, a nice roof and a few dormers, which is very appealing. And the entire basement is going to be unfinished for now, and we think the house blends in very nicely with the topography and the area as of now, so we would hope that with the newly resized, downsized home, the board would consider this for approval, they'll be on.
I'm just going to, I'm going to jump in here for a second. I have something that's dated December 4th, 2018 with Lincoln Tully. And my question about the bedrooms. This map says proposed five-bedroom dwellings.
Yes.
That's an error on that, it should be proposed two-bedroom dwellings, correct? So that'll be taken care of, and I'm going to have a nice small sheet, not this big sheet, right? Okay. I'm fussy, I'm sorry. So I just want to be very clear, it's a two-bedroom dwelling.
It's a two-bedroom dwelling, that's right.
So I knew I saw a five somewhere. Alright, so that one, and I'm going to ask for the same thing, that any future plans to be signed, bottom right-hand corner, has the signature stamp that Maria Rubio has in the bottom right-hand corner, so I don't have to go back and forth on all the plans. And since, it's not going to stop the application from moving forward, but we have, this is dated July 11th, the ARB application, can you fill me out a new one? Being that the square footage has changed and some of the colors have changed, oh, I just need a brand-new one. If you need, I had an extra, I had an extra one in my file, so that you did very well with all the printing out, but it needs to be on this form, so it's quite clear for, because this gets attacked with our attorneys, I need a revised ARB application. And I see Rick is shaking his head at me. And other thing is, the house looks beautiful, but I'm going to ask, the window that's above the garage, above the entryway, and above here, is that open to the first floor, or is that just there for aesthetically?
Aesthetically, the one to the left side is not even, they're not even headlights, it's just the window just, it just looks better, that's all, aesthetically, yeah.
Because this is, because where these dormers are...
They're all aesthetically only.
That's the attic.
They don't have a room in there.
Alright, and there's no livable space in the attic?
No, and actually, the room that they're above is the large dining room, and their dining room has a well.
So it's going to generate, so it's probably going to, alright, I just wanted to know that. Okay. Since I monopolize that, Natalie, want to go over your memo?
So, this application was last discussed on August 15th, at which time your board had questions regarding building height, room designations, and others. Based on these questions and the overall size of the proposed home, the board requested an interpretation from Building Inspector Thomasberger as to whether the application would comply with the definition of a single-family home. Furthermore, the board was advised by counsel to withhold action under secret pending Gary's interpretation. On November 28th, as you noted, Maria, Gary provided that in his opinion, the proposed application would be considered a single-family dwelling, but he did note in his letter that if the proposed unfinished spaces were to be finished, the application would require further review and also a building permit. And we also note that any other use of it than a single-family home of the bedroom count shown, just two, would impact the septic design, well supply, parking needs, among others. With respect to seeker, we defer to counsel, but offer that a single-family home is considered a type 2 action. This application is subject to review under ARB and rich preservation. Under both of these guidelines, we believe the board should consider the overall size of the structure with respect to excessive dissimilarity or inappropriateness in relation to existing structures for which a permit has been issued, facing upon the same street and within 300 feet of the proposed site. In consideration of this criteria, we offer the applicant is proposing a combined finished floor space of, as the applicant suggested, 6,954 square feet, just under 7,000 square feet. Furthermore, the structure, including unfinished spaces, would amass to 20,000 square feet or more. For comparison to other dwellings in the development, our records show that the largest dwelling reviewed by your board is 4,479 square feet. The difference in finished space is 2,475 square feet, but considering the unfinished space, the proposed dwelling is approximately four times larger. The applicant has provided a photo of the structure. We recommend that you consider with the applicant whether this is representative of the site with respect to landscaping and the setback from the road. And as the applicant suggested, there is a large landscape portion that will not be disturbed, and maybe that picture should kind of show that appropriately. The applicant has submitted material and color selections, which we recommend be reviewed in terms of visual impact. And finally, the applicant has confirmed the building height is 29 feet 10 inches, which complies with the code requirements. The planned submission to the Building Department for a building permit will be required to comply, and that's all we have.
May I respond?
Just give me...
Up to the board.
Yeah.
Just let me go to Rick.
Excuse me, two things. One is that this is a type 2 action, so you should note that in your motion. And secondly, that even though the home has been reduced, this board still needs to, in its role as an ARB, determine whether or not there's still excessive dissimilarity in the neighborhood. It's not just a 300-foot, and I will provide the planning board with some guidance on this, so that they can best make their determination as to whether or not this home is revised, is, still fits within the neighborhood, or may breach the excessive dissimilarity provision.
Do you remember that we approved it maybe a year ago or so, two years, a year and a half ago? With this, where the home is, as you go in, on the right-hand side, we approved a very large home there. I'm not sure if that's the one that's 4,000 square feet? Do you remember? I don't recall the name of the application.
We did this home as well, actually, so that's what I wanted to point out, because I think that's what Natalie was referring to. So that home owner has since gone back to the Building Department to finish his basement, and he's got a CFO for that, and his finished space is, I think, closer to 6,000 at this point. On the other hand, that 20,000 square feet, I don't know how that number came upon, because even if we calculate, like, the entire unfinished basement, the used space of the attic, I could barely reach 15. So I don't know where the number 20, I calculated it a few times this morning, and I was kind of curious how that number came up. But like I said, if we're about, if we calculate all the unfinished spaces, even with the ones we never planned to finish, like 14,000, 15,000, give or take, and the one across is right now finished space, in the 6,000 square feet range, so we're not, the gap is not that much, I believe.
The 20,000 square feet was an approximation, but if you're testing that, it's 15,000 square feet with unfinished and finished basement, or finished spaces?
Yeah.
Still three times larger than the other approved homes, so I think with regard to, you know, the mass is still applicable.
And it's, and it's not just comparing square footages, as, you know, whether you're counting or not counting finished areas, non-finished areas, that's one of the elements of whether or not something is dissimilar, but it's not the only criteria. Part of the criteria is just envisioning that house on that lot, and whether or not that is excessively dissimilar to other homes in the neighborhood. And again, like I said, I'll provide some guidance for the board, to make it easier for the board to make that determination. I'm not saying whether it is or isn't, but it is an issue that you do have to address in ARB.
How many acres is that property? Just out of curiosity. I can't make, I can't make up your writing from July. 2.10? Okay, 2.10 is what's on the county thing, okay. Michael, stand up, please. Sorry.
Hi. Barry Tarek, architect. To the point that Mr. Golden was making, there, in the immediate area of this proposed house, the only house that's there is the one across the street, is 13 Apple Hill, the one you were referring to, and that is the larger house that received its approval, however long ago that was. That house is about, is just under 110 feet wide, from, standing from the street, end to end. It's 108 and change, I think. And this proposed house is 130, which is larger, granted, but we're not comparing it to a 60 or 70-foot house directly across the street from it. It's already a, I would say, a rough size that's established and accepted in the neighborhood. So it does come down to more than just square footage.
You said wide or length from end to end? Like where the garage is to where the...
If you're, if you're standing on the road, so your right hand to your left hand.
So it's from the drive, so it's looking at the front of the house?
Right, so looking at that house straight on the front.
So you say 105, 100?
108, 108, is that the right?
You're, this house?
No, the one across the street.
It's about 108.
108.
But this one is, you said?
130.
130? So we're looking at a difference, okay, so, alright.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
It's 22 feet long.
I happen to have, I happen to have the picture of the house across the street, if you want to, I'll just have it here, if I can go around and show it to you.
No.
Look at the similarities.
That's quite all right.
The reason I would say no is because anything that the board is to rely upon needs to be in the record.
Okay.
And so the public also can go ahead and view that, so just passing something around and then taking it away defeats that purpose. If you want to, I'm not, yeah, you can submit it, that's fine, and I just don't want somebody to say, and then somebody else say later on that that wasn't exactly the picture.
Is it on the one that you submitted, November 8th?
Actually, it is there.
It is, you did submit it?
Yeah.
This is the one from, that's this one here?
That's this one.
That's one there. This is paperwork that was submitted for November 8th, and it's the one right smack in the center. I don't know if anyone got the extra pictures? Alright. Yeah, I keep holding the colored pictures, so that's the center one. So you're saying that's about 108? Chris, you have the, Chris? Third page, last page.
Yep.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm just looking at these other homes that are up there, so we'll have to make that determination. Some of them have solar panels up there.
Big house.
It is a big house, yes. Now, my question, to go back to the resolution from May 27, 2003, it says basement, any home with basements needs footing drains, and any retaining walls have to be ARB. That's something I picked up. I don't know if we did that for this 13 Apple Hill. I may have brought it up, because I know I had the old, so that just needs to be, being that this has a basement, do they have to show us those footing drains?
We'll look at that a little closer, Maria, if that's okay, and get back to you, but if that's what's in the resolution, I would imagine that yes, the applicant has to comply.
I want to make sure we did that. It's too late now if we didn't do it for the house across the street, but I'm pretty sure that I may have had that in there, so people can look at that.
Yep. It's on page 13. And maybe something that the Building Department picked up as well during the permit process.
Okay. My only other thought is...
John Queen and Harry just mentioned to me that the footing drains are actually shown on the site plan.
They are on the plan, I didn't...
Yeah.
Oh, they're on there, okay. Thank you. So like, I'm not the engineer, that's why I'm asking. I'll let you go next, because I, there's something else I've got to remember, go ahead.
Can we get a picture of what the back of the house looks like? I mean, the front's very attractive, I'd like to see what the back looks like.
We haven't rendered one, but we can definitely do one, yeah.
Okay.
Here's the rear elevation, but it's not colored.
Is it on there?
No, correct. Here's the rear elevation, what it looks like.
That's the rear.
That's the rear, this is the left side. Just want to make sure that the elevations were in there, which are, the height is there, and this next one, you have the front from the right side.
It's a bit smaller, I mean, a half a foot.
I try and ask that we submit this, but many more members, on the smaller side. Do you see the, can you see that?
Maria, is it clear from the ARB materials that the same treatment that's shown on the front is going to be on all of the sides? Is that noted someplace?
Is that noted on that little...
It's not, the panel research, yes, it's, there's too many windows, I mean, it's not a back.
Okay, but what he's saying is that on, if you reproduce these, that you put on here, that it's the same materials, or give us a...
Yeah, we'll label all the materials.
Okay.
They are the same.
Thank you.
Anything else, Robert?
No.
Chris?
The two on the north side of the building, the two window wells, are those egress wells or are those just light wells? It's on the lock, locking probably drawing.
You know, the, I would almost say undetermined, they're probably egress size, I'm sure they are, just because that's what I'm in the habit of doing.
Okay, so there'd be the, that would be a staircase for the basement, and then two egress windows on the north side?
Correct.
And then the septic system?
Exactly, yeah, it's requirement for egress.
Well, it's required for finished space, not...
Finished or unfinished now.
Okay. And the septic system was designed for five bedrooms? Is that going to be downside? Does it get on the lock?
That's what...
Okay.
So the septic system is going to be designed for two bedrooms? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, because right now it's designed for five with a 50%, expansion area.
John Queen and Lincoln Tully, yes, we would, we would amend the septic system to be equivalent to the number of bedrooms proposed.
Anything else? Rich?
The only thing I have is getting back to what Rick said about similar, dissimilar. Looking at the pictures of the six or seven other houses on the block, can we get the size of those from Gary? Because I don't, I see the, I see the picture, but I don't know the size of it.
Sure. They, there's different applications that we've approved over the years. We could ask...
If I may, I believe that we have that listing as well, and then we can share that with the board, and confirm with the Building Department also, and make sure that that's appropriate.
Yeah, before we make that, see, yeah, okay.
Alright, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Alright. You say this is a type 2 action? Okay. Or if you get, anyone else want to make a type motion, or do you want me to do it?
I'm into motion.
Okay. Who's going to second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Type 2 done. Do we, does the board feel that they have enough information to move forward to have a public hearing, or do they need more information?
I think, if I might...
Go ahead.
...suggest. I think the issue, I mean, this is basically an ARB, and, you know, the issue of how the home looks, et cetera, is with respect to dissimilarity and everything else, and the square footages that are going to be provided, probably should be provided prior to the setting of the public hearing, so the public has the ability to go ahead and review those materials. That's, that's my suggestion, anyway, and that the public hearing should wait until the board has those materials, thinks that it's appropriate and properly representative, and then you might even have some discussion on it, and then I think it would be appropriate to set the public hearing, but it is up to the board.
Okay. And in that respect as well, rich preservation, when this development was, way back when, was being approved, I know they did balloon testing, and we did extensive, it's way before your time, Natalie. Because I was on the board when we walked through there, when it was all woods and whatnot. Does the board can, do we need to wave, doing a... Does the board can, do we need to waive doing a proposed picture?
Yeah, if you don't...
It's microphones.
If you don't, I keep turning it off because I'm afraid I'm going to run out the battery, so. Yes, if you're going to waive the photo simulation, that's otherwise required, and you can waive, then you should do that, if that's your intention, is to waive that requirement as unnecessary because of the prior applications and how that affected the entirety of it. Unless you waive it, it is, it will be required.
You said you had samples?
Yes.
Do you want to show us that real quick, so we can have an idea? While Mr. Brock's getting those out. Anyone here have a problem with waiving the photo simulation? Robert?
No, no problem.
Chris?
No, it's okay.
Rich? Okay, so we'll take care of that next. All right, so what do we have? The colors here. I know we're going to get an updated one. It's showing, I don't care. You have sterling gray, certainty for the shakes, and the siding is granite gray. Rick, we're just going to talk about this, he's going to submit the proper form for you.
Two shades of gray, the lighter one is a sterling gray, and the darker one is a granite gray.
Okay, that's for the house?
That's for the house.
And then the metal roof accent. I just need to see what that bron, midnight...
I'd like to bring those to the...
Yeah, okay. Board members, you're okay with that? The midnight bronze, I just want to see what that color is for the metal accent and where that's going to go.
Wait, I can maybe get to the asphalt roof and sound as well.
Madely? If you can do, it's a darker color, being it's in Ridge Preservation, I'm not sure what we stated years ago, because that's metal, and it would reflect. All right, if you can just check that out, board members, that's this color right there.
The front picture, there's two metal streaks up, a little break, a very small break between the house and the gable, and that goes in conjunction with the other one.
Okay. Because I don't, I forget what the color roofs are up there, so we have, the roof is a charcoal.
Charcoal. Which is exactly what the house towards you have.
Okay.
Yes, exactly the same thing.
All right. You see?
Mm-hmm. The other one also has two gray, that's the one across the street also has two gray. The gray one, I'm not sure, two gray, that's something there.
All right, we don't have to work that out. The columns are going to be white, and the windows are non-glare, right?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure. Just make sure when you fill out that application again, that you put everything on there, and put the square footage, and what else do we need? All right, so board members, we have enough information, and the applicant will get us back. If you can get, if you can turn around the information, do you think we'll be able to have him on in the next meeting, or you think it's going to take longer than that, just to review?
I want to make sure I have him on, sorry, so the revised application?
The revised ARB application. Elevations we have. Madely, you going to look into the...
Yep, we'll provide the listing, which is readily available, but we will confirm with the building department, but I think Mike Cantoli's plan needs to be updated as well, at least for the septic and other things. One thing I think we want to clarify is whether the applicant just stated that the colors are the same as the residence across the street, or...
Not the same, one shade is the same.
Oh, just one, okay. And that's the roofing?
Just the roof.
Correct.
Roofing and one of the two siding colors, yeah.
Just verifying. So we did the type 2 already, I'm going to be on there. All right, so I'm going to offer a motion that we waive the photo simulation due to the unnecessarily needed because of the prior application that was approved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Actually, you don't have to do the photos, so you might not be on in the next two weeks. Because you would have had, they would have to have everything in by Friday, the updated front piece expires, and it would have been today.
Right, exactly.
Unless, usually Dennis, when's Dennis coming?
Well, that's the question, I'm sorry. Are you saying we could... Give them until Friday? Do you think that you could have everything submitted by then?
Is there a revised side plan, revised application?
Well, the application you can do and send it in by tomorrow, that's a matter of you, that's not a problem.
I'm just trying to make sure I know what I'm about to promise here.
How quickly can you get your revisions done?
I can have them by Friday.
It's up to the board members, are you okay with that, or not? Because we would have, they would have to have it in by Friday. If they didn't have it in by Friday, they won't be on with January 16 meeting. It's not the public hearing, it's just a meeting to review.
I'm okay to give them to Friday at 5:00. Close the business, 4:00, close the business, okay.
I was trying to give you an hour.
No, they're gone by 4 o'clock. So, all right. Rich, you're okay with that, Friday by 4:00?
Yes.
All right. 3:00, 3:30.
3:30. Give Maria, give Maria, I don't want her to yell at me, so...
I'm more than aware.
All right, so if you, as long as you can get that all in, we'll work with Madely, and we'll try to get them on, well, if you get it in by 3 o'clock Friday, we'll get you on the next agenda, and then we'll review everything, and then we can set a public hearing then.
Okay, appreciate that.
All right?
We have one other question, the criteria for dissimilarity or similarity, were you able to get a copy of that from Rick when you prepared it for the board, or is that something? Okay. Thank you.
Because it's something that the board will rely upon.
That's, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
So we're good?
We're good.
Have a good night? Are you here for the next application as well?
Yeah, you're stuck with your...
Okay, I must, that's okay. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
All right. Let me get my next file. So the next application is Ridge Realty. Review and discuss proposed three-lot subdivision of parcel located at 345 Ridge Road in Highland Mills. Said property is known in the Village of Waverly, Tax notice section 204, block 1, lot 14.2. Thank you for the file. Just for the record, December 27, we received response from Orange County DPW on 12/28, we received an H2M memo, and I wrote on here, need EAF, a question mark. We'll defer to Rick when we get to you on that one. Okay. Go ahead, John.
Good evening, John Queen from Mike Cantoli, engineer for the applicant. Before you tonight, we did a, we did a conceptual sketch subdivision plan for your initial review, and I'll get into exactly why we did a sketch at first, but basically the property is located at 345 Ridge Road. It's just adjacent to Owens Drive here on the, on the southern border, and then it extends northerly or northeasterly for approximately 500 feet to the, to the edge of the property over here. The property is about 11.6 acres in size, and it's located in the R2A zoning district. The property itself slopes down from Ridge Road, there's a, there's a federal wetland area here in the front that's, that's hatched, that's about 2.48 acres in size, and there's an existing curb or an existing dirt drive that accesses the property, and it comes up here on this, I'll say, the northerly corner. Property then slopes up all the way to the back, shrinks here in the midsection of the back, and then continues all the way to the rear of the property. What we're proposing are, is a three-lot subdivision, lot 1 being the first lot down here on the southerly portion, and it would have a new access driveway directly across Owens Drive, through the small wetland disturbance here, and up to a house with a well and a septic field. Lot 2 would extend, would be northerly, would extend back through here, and the house, well and septic, would be located back in this area, in the back of the property, and lot number 3 would be in the most northerly section, mirroring lot number 1. Lots 2, 1 and, 2 and 3 have, will have a proposed common driveway access, utilizing the existing, we'll say, gravel entrance at this point, it would be upgraded, obviously, to county standards for residential driveway entrance, and it would be common for the first about 250 feet, where lot 3 would continue on to the proposed dwelling, and lots, lot number 2's driveway would cut across, well, through an easement and go up to the back. We did this arrangement in order to avoid wetland disturbance along the front of the parcel, and then also some consultation with the county, they were a little bit happier that less curb cuts, the better, so that's why we combined 2 and 3. We didn't think that it was feasible really to combine all three, so that's why we did additional driveway access for lot number 1 at the, at the southerly corner. So the reason why we did, I did a sketch plan, all the lots, we have, we have the net and the gross, we've deducted out wetlands, steep slopes, any existing easements that were located on the property. All of the parcels are well above the two-acre minimum when you factor in the net or the subtractions. What I was really looking for tonight before the board was to solicit your comments before we really went into the detailed design for the septic systems, really wanted to get a firmer grip on the layout, and if, if the board was comfortable with the common driveway access for lots 2 and 3, because that'll significantly change the application with regards to grading through the wetlands, wetland disturbance, et cetera. It would also, I wanted to make sure that this arrangement of lot number 2, although it's not a flag lot, it's a very deep lot, with the house being situated behind lots 1 and 3. So that's why we have, we kind of have lot 1 shown, or I'm sorry, lot 3 shown, pushed this way, so it's not directly, you know, in front of this one, and this lot is pushed forward, so that they're all kind of separated without anyone looking at anyone else. We've also preliminarily showed wells, they'll be serviced by wells and septic systems on each lot, and each lot, the owner would like to put a pool area on each lot, so we've shown that just temporarily as a placeholder, once we develop the plans in a little further detail. So right now, we're just at a conceptual sketch, it's really for the lot configuration and the driveway layouts.
Madely, you're up.
We did have quite a few comments, and I don't want to belabor everything, because John just covered some of them, but as he described, the plan submitted has the detail of a rough sketch plan. It's intended to provide basic information for the board on the parcel boundaries, topography, water and sewer, land restrictions, and other general details prior to proceeding with the preliminary plan. In connection with zoning, we recommend that the applicant submit a copy of their calculations for net lot area, which I believe John had just described that they have prepared now, we haven't seen that yet. As he also stated, the lot number 2, while it's not a flag lot per se, it is a deep lot, and it does share the common drive with lot number 1, or lot number 3, I'm sorry. These lots, like I said, are not technically defined as flag lots, but the deep lot configuration of 2 results in dwelling facing the rear yard of lots 1 and 3. We recommend that the board consider mitigations for the visual impact on lot 2 to be considered in the form of protecting healthy trees between the cleared septic field, lot 2, and the pools proposed on lots 1 and 3. We did have a typo on our memo on page 2, the last sentence of paragraph 1C, where it says lots 2 and 3, but that should be 1 and 3 that have the pools. Again, the proposed lot provides for a partially shared driveway for approximately 250 feet from Ridge Road. We don't typically recommend shared driveways as issues with maintenance, mailbox clustering, and garbage pickup tend to develop over time. However, we believe the unique circumstance of this application requires it be considered, especially with respect to multiple access points off of Ridge Road, and available site distance is, which John attested, was considered by them. Some of that can be shown on the plan. If permitted, we recommend the driveway be widened slightly at Ridge Road to allow a car to enter while a car is leaving. We also recommend that the applicant confirm the grade of the driveways comply with the code, and John stated that there may be some improvements to the driveway, which should be shown on the plan as details, again, on a sketch plan's level, so we understand that that would be forthcoming. On the utilities, the code requires all subdivisions located within municipal water and sewer areas be served by municipal utilities. The code also allows the planning board to waive this requirement where the subdivision involves less than five lots, and when an undue financial burden is imposed on the applicant or circumstances do not require strict enforcement of the code, in this case, a connection to municipal sewer may be feasible if the superintendent agrees. The applicant should advise whether they have explored this ability to connect. In any event, the applicant will be required to confirm compliance with mandatory health department separation distances between water and wastewater system components, and these requirements should be shown on the plan. Furthermore, testing and well development will need to be completed as the application proceeds to preliminary and final approval. Regarding stormwater management, a single-family residential development is exempt from MS4 regulations, however, the plan should include reasonable techniques for addressing water quality and runoff from the proposed, the proposed impervious surfaces, with particular attention to the long and relatively steep driveways. An erosion and sediment control plan should also be provided, and the applicant should confirm the requirements of any other agencies regulating the wetland on site are met. John has attested that there are some disturbances. We have provided some limited comments on landscaping with respect to the code, requirements for ridge preservation and front yard landscaping. We recommend that applicant show the limits of clearing on the plan, and the board consider the requirements for front yard landscaping, which is one tree per 40 feet, and the applicability is the same for this development, given the long access drive. In accordance with your typical practice, we believe the applicant should provide any restrictive covenant, covenants, easements, or development agreements associated with the parcel for the board and council to consider. Other comments in our memo ask the applicant to confirm the elevations listed on the plan in consideration of ridge preservation applicability, as well as the fate of existing structures, stone walls, and drainage pipes, and we believe that an EAF should be provided for this application. That's all we have for the moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rick?
That was a lot of buildup for really nothing that was worth saying.
The other one has a green light, I don't know if that one's...
Mine's flashing green, which means we're running out of something. Here's one. I don't really have anything at this, this point. We have not received environmental assessment form, and therefore you should not take any initial secret steps at this point. We have to look at, Natalie was just referencing like the potential in her memo for the shared driveway and addressing that issue. We have to see how that works with land that is, normally you can't put an easement on land that you own yourself, right? Normally, it's an easement on land that's owned by somebody else, and although in the future it'll be owned by somebody else, we have to look into the legality of actually filing an easement on your own property. So we'll have to address that, that issue.
The reason why we did not submit an EAF is because I'm unsure, if we have to go with separate driveways, then I, then the Army Corps becomes, you know, much more involved and more disturbed, so that's why I held off on really the EAF at this point.
So, so you're, you basically want the planning board's opinion as to whether or not they believe that the shared driveway is acceptable to them, putting aside the issue of how we legally go ahead and address that?
Yes.
If the planning board is willing to discuss it, you can discuss it, otherwise they'll have to think about that and get back to it at the next meeting.
Lot 2, the house that's all the way up in the top, if I'm reading the elevations right, that's a, it goes from 432 up to 482. So you're saying it's a 50-foot increase?
Yes. Yes, the road is at a 430, if you start right here at the bottom.
Right, if you start over at the bottom, I did it...
And the dwelling is a 484, something like that.
I'm just curious, that's more than a, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out where the road in Woodbury is like that, like such a steep, is it like a White Kent Hill, which is a, I mean, because there's limitations of, it's 11 or 14 percent grade?
I think it's 15 percent for driveways and 2 percent for the first portion off of Ridge Road. We've asked the applicant to kind of confirm that. I think that the only one that may exceed 15 percent is lot 1, but again, they would have to provide those calculations and confirm. and confirm.
Just, just to give you some perspective, I mean, this, this distance here at the bottom, that's, that's a 600-foot run. So that, that equates to basically this run here. So the driveway is, is probably something close to 1,500 feet long by the time you get there. By the time you get the comment here, you come back and you come back and you come back up. So, over time, it's a, it's a steep slope from 480 feet, but you're not going in a straight line.
Okay. Um, my concern with the, at lot number two, where it is all the way at the top point, I see there's, um, there's, it says Middleman, it has Carey and it has Renana Park. Being all the way at the top point of that, I would like to know in relationship what other residents, seasonal or year-round are near there because this house will be in someone's backyard. And then also, it's also gonna be above lot number three and one and it's on a hill.
We can get that out.
You know, people, they're gonna be looking down. So I, I have a concern about that and I, and I guess you have an address with... We're good over there?
No.
Did it die? Let me know when you're ready.
On the side, those chairs are very good in the back.
You want to sleep?
You don't want to leave.
It won't work now?
Nope.
Alright. We won't, we won't have too much more. Okay, we'll talk slow.
Talk slow.
I presume with the lot one, you're going over federal wetlands, so you would have to devise something with, uh, give permission to go over the wetland for a driveway.
Correct, but it's, it's less than a tenth of an acre. So it's, it's, it's a general permit, whereas if I have to go with the, with the lot two going through the wetland and then I have to go to a, uh, an individual permit, which is, it's a big jump.
And you have to, um, is it 100 feet from the, from the property loan to the, I forget, from federal wetlands? Is there a certain...
Well, there's no.
It's 200 feet, it's 200 feet. So I, I thought, I, so where the dwelling is to where the federal wetlands, you have to have feedback. There's a certain setback. And I think, I was saying...
I'm not aware there is one for federal. There is one for state. There's a 100-foot buffer on state wetlands. But on Army Corps, to my knowledge, there is no setback or buffer requirement.
Okay. I, I would have to check. If you can check on that, because I know there's... Alright, Robert, talk slowly.
Um, yes. So, is there, um, water and sewer service provided by the town on, along that road?
Please.
Yes and no. There's a force main, I believe. There was a, there was a, I had a prior, um, plan for this. There was another applicant at one point in time who investigated water and sewer. And they bailed out because we really couldn't get water and sewer here. There's a force main down Owens Drive and turns and that's from the subdivision, um, up in the back there, country hall, I believe. Um, and at the time, when we were talking to the village DPW with town, they did not want connection to that force main. So we actually had a plan for sewer to go from this subdivision, um, down the road. I forget the, past the Seven Springs. I forget the name of it. Um, it was like...
Highland Lake Estates.
That's it. We were gonna tap into Highland Lake Estates for sewer and basically run that down and across. It was like 3,500 linear feet of new main that had to go in. Same thing for water. There's no water directly in this area. You have to either go up Ridge Road to get it or back to Highland Lake Estates. So we're kind of in, I'd say no man's land for, for lack of a better term for that. We did investigate that. And going for three lots to pay for that improvement to bring it to the site for that is, is just not financially feasible.
Will the location, all these, um, septic areas work? I mean, I...
We did some preliminary testing, um, and we've gotten positive results. We have to do more testing obviously and get them on the plan and then, then those tests get confirmed through the, witnessed by the building department. So, we're fairly comfortable in the locations that we have right now.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Chris?
So I have a concern with the shared entrance for lots one and two. Um, I understand people can get agreements, you know, stuff like that, but in the event, you know, someone doesn't take care of it, you're putting two families at risk if there's medical emergency, a fire, police services required, you get into some sort of dispute. Um, so personally, I would be against two dwellings having to share a single entrance off of Ridge Road for access.
And also, respect to that, um, where this is a 90-degree with a, with a fire truck.
Yeah, well...
Well, that's another issue for another, for the day.
Yeah, that can, that I can amend. I just took the shortest path to get at a lot, lot number three.
No, I, I agree with you, Chris, on the shared driver. Anything else?
No, that's, I mean, conceptually right now, it's my big, would be my concern.
Is that a one-lane driveway or is it a two-lane driveway? So it could allow cars to go back and forth at the same time?
Right now, I would, we would upgrade this first portion to, to fit two vehicles and then from there it would be one and one. Once you, once you get to the split point to go to each lot, then we would, we would throw it at them.
We would have to see what the minimum width of a driveway would be once you split off?
I would probably, I would probably propose 12 feet. And then for lot number two, I would, I would have turnoffs probably every 500 feet or so just for a pull-off in case another car is coming down.
Okay. Rich?
Same concern about shared driveway.
And the applicant, the feasibility of just doing two lots instead of three? If you're gonna do their own, I'm just, I, I don't need an answer.
Yep.
If they're gonna do their own septic and well, I'm just, because that one lot all the way to the top, that kind of, that, if you're saying 1,500 feet, that's, that's long. You know? And I'm concerned about the three lots that are up and behind there and Renana Park. I know it's seasonal, but I don't know how close to the other homes that would, you know, if they're, they have backyards and everything.
Yeah, I think the Middleman is a cul-de-sac. I believe his house sits somewhere here. Um, Carey, I believe their house is more over here and I'm not sure about, you know, Rahana Park, but it's over there. But we can, we can show that on an aerial alert.
Okay. So I guess you have some thoughts, concerns and you review this and...
Yeah, I think, uh, this, I think based on the feedback language, I appreciate it. I would, I'm probably gonna amend it to do separate driveways then and we'll go from there.
Okay, so, alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Um, board members, before you leave real quick, I just got, I have one thing real quick here. Um, I spoke with Gary Thomasberger and, um, Rick was copied on this. We received the 200 tower, look, it's, it's Camp Buckner. They want to put a 200-foot monopole on their site. And it's on federal property, but this is a question for Rick, for Gary. So Rick, it's in the village of Woodbury, but it's also on West Point property. Your interpretation of that?
I don't have enough...
Please, Mike, just...
I don't have enough information from this one letter to make a determination as to what we should be doing. I, I think initially, we should be sending it off to Mike Musso for his review because it may be something that sometimes with Gary and Mike under the regulations, they can determine that it doesn't need planning board review, it can just get a building permit. So I don't think this is gonna fit into that category, but I think that we should refer to make that determination. But I don't, I mean, all we have is, you know, three paragraphs.
I know.
And a, a very indistinguishable map which shows a dot in the middle of undeveloped area. So...
Alright, so then I want to ask Natalie...
I guess it's more than three paragraphs, but it isn't many.
If you looked out to Maria in the building apartment and asked her to just refer this over to Mike, it's just a, it is interpretation of the letter and maybe he can direct us for how to go on this.
Okay.
Alright. Anyone else? Board members, consultants? Anything additional? I'll offer a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You don't want to stay anymore, do you, Rich?
Yeah.
Alright, and it's the heat at the next meeting at 60 degrees.
Yeah, it's a little chilly.